This conference will now be recorded.
A call to order the September 11th open meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting laws to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer via global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of the body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? As the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, I would ask that we all observe a moment of silence in remembrance of those who perished 22 years ago as a result of the terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001. Okay, to move on with the meeting, we are going to, we have some public comments. Our first individual is Mark Lindblum. Could you please come up and state your name and address?
Board members, thank you for your time. Everyone else, my name is Mark Lindblum. I live at 1 Eames Drive in Auburn, Precinct 5, a town meeting member. Just had some questions on some of the roads. The main one, the main concern I have is the lack of sidewalks on Bryn Mawr Ave from the water station, water pumping station, to the sidewalk that goes over the Mass Pike. So that quarter mile, that there is no sidewalk there. That's a heavily, heavily developed location. I've had numerous phone calls regarding that location. Also, the, the condition that the sidewalk itself is in that crosses over the Mass Pike. Again, if you go there, I have photos if there's members that want me to send them to them, I can do that. The sidewalk itself is incredibly dilapidated and then also the guardrail itself appears as though it's been hit a few times. There's some broken and extruded metal that is also on the sidewalk over that location. So because of the amount of people that are over there, the amount of walkers, the schoolchildren, everyone else, I'd like to see if that could get, could get looked at. Then also I have questions, again, I've been talking to the DPW, trying to get some work done on the roads of Maple Street, Tinker Hill, and seeing if there's anything that could be done on Blaker Street and Eames Drive, E-A-M-E-S. Those roads have been in pretty rough condition. They, they do get patched quite a bit by the DPW, so I know they're working on it, but they're also continually patching them and they're just getting beat up. That's also one of the locations where they're doing a lot of, where Eastland's been doing a lot of work and they also have been some other developments that have going on up the street. Eastland was on them a few times, which wasn't again, they usually use Albert Street, but there has been other construction going on up in the vicinity of 78 or 90, Tinker Hill. And again, just those roads have taken a beating over the last few, the last couple of years. Just like to see if those could get worked on. Thank you very mu, any questions? Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have another public comment, Rebecca Mars.
Hi, Rebecca Mars. I live on 305 Bryn Mawr Ave with my husband and two kids. I have a two-month-old and a three-year-old. And I'm here to talk about the sidewalks as well from the water station basically to my house. It's super dangerous. We've been almost hit multiple times. We've had cars speed past us and almost get hit head-on because you can't see around the curve. It's super dangerous. I know police cars are constantly posted across the street from me as well as down the street to catch people, and they're catching people constantly, but once you get to that curve, it's just super dangerous and there's nothing helping us. And when you have a double stroller going down that road, you're taking up the whole side of the road.
On to, did you want to move up? Items eight, is that sidewalks?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I can make a motion to move out of order, items A, B, and C in the order of B, C, then A, sorry, eight, A, B, C, in the order of eight B, eight C, and then eight A, out of respect for the time for the residents that are here as well as the relevant town staff.
All those in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, I do have the DPW Director on the dashboard awaiting to have a discussion with the board. Let me just tell the residents that have come forward tonight that we plan on initiating a new program here in Auburn. It's going to be a sidewalk and a pedestrian safety program that we're going to propose to initiate at the Fall Town Meeting. We're trying to come up with a plan and identify funds to kickstart that program that may allow us to do some of the work that you identified. But it does come with some problems. Some of the property we do not own and we have to get it permitted through the state. That's something we're willing to do. But these are some of the questions that I believe that the DPW Director is prepared to address tonight as a result of an inquiry by, by the Board of Selectmen. So with that, I will turn it over to Joanna and Joanna, maybe you can identify some of the things you were asked to look at for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. So with respect to the sidewalk on Bryn Mawr Ave, there's three sections of that sidewalk that we would need to handle separately. The section possibly have a, I'm sorry?
We lost you there for a minute, Joanna. If you could just start over.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the first section would be in front of the sewer pump station. We're looking at, we're currently in the, the bidding stage of the rehabilitation of the sewer pump station and as part of that, we'd be looking at providing a walkway within the, on the lot itself, not along the roadway. That would be a little bit problematic just because of, it's right on the, on the bend of the, the road. So we're looking at making it as safe as possible to, to allow for the pedestrian public to cross that section. We wouldn't be able to continue it on to the wooded area just because that's private property. So that would require a lot more planning, permitting, and, and preparing that project as, as well as funding. So that would come at a later date. And then, so the section starting at the wooded area along the, right at the bend in the road to, to the Mass DOT property, that would be one section of, you know, one project that would need to be designed, surveyed, a lot more, a lot more cumbersome. There would be a little bit more work involved in, in the planning process of it. So it would, it would, we would have to secure funding first for the design and then the, the construction of it. And then following up through the, the Mass DOT Bridge, we, the Mass DOT, I believe, would allow us to make improvements on there right away. It was just, it would be a permitting process, so we'd be willing to do that. It would just, we can't do that work until we get that permit. I'm not sure, there were other, I don't know if you would like me to address any of the other questions on the other roads or if you had any additional questions on Bryn Mawr?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Certainly.
Joanna, how are you doing? This is Todd. Couple of questions for you. In terms of the, the existing sidewalk in Bryn Mawr and the new sidewalk that you just installed, some of the placements of the mailboxes, et cetera, reduce the passable width of the sidewalk down to either just at or below ADA standards of 36-inch clear continuous path of travel. Are there strategies that the department, I know you, you, when I first raised this issue, you, you, I assume you or somebody went out and rotated some of the mailboxes so they no longer had that issue, but there are still some that are positioned, and this is not just for those within wheelchairs, but also the double-wide strollers, et cetera, that makes it difficult for them to, to use the sidewalk?
So sure, through the Chair, I had, I had gone out there last week to take a look at those, the newly constructed sidewalk. The mailboxes that are, that were cemented in place, we had worked with the, the post office to turn them 90 degrees to allow for that 36-inch clearance. The other mailboxes are in planters, so we were able to just shift them over by a few inches and get that, that 36-inch clearance. There was one mailbox that wasn't, that was a little bit, the, the planter was a little bit wider, so to allow for that, we, the Highway Department went out and extended it so that we, we did meet that 36-inch clearance.
Thank you very much. Another question that I have with respect to the Mass DOT Bridge, a resident just sent me right before the meeting and I'll be more than happy to forward these on to you as well as the town manager, pictures of the condition of the sidewalk over the bridge and the, the poor condition that some of the panels are in cracked, there's the spacing between the joints. If I send these to you, is it possible for you or the town manager to reach out to Mass DOT District 3, make them aware of this and ask them to do an assessment and, and make repairs to this?
Absolutely. We can, we can certainly reach out to Mass DOT. The, the one area that I was made aware of was that, that 15-foot section right before the bridge, but yeah, we can definitely reach out to Mass DOT.
And I guess, and that's, that sort of feeds into, my next question was for Bryn Mawr, there is that section that is to the north of the bridge that goes from an existing sidewalk and then it disappears probably about 20 to 30 feet before the bridge to the north of it. Is there a, a plan to connect that sidewalk? Is that, would that be part of when you do the work on the opposite side? There, there's just a gap there that, that is not an ADA passable path?
I'd have to revisit it. I know that when I was out there, there, I'm not sure if we're, I want to make sure that we're, we're talking about the same area. There is, the sidewalk extends to the Mass DOT driveway and then crosses over and then there was that, that, the area that's not really paved but still part of that bridge.
Yeah, so this is if you, if you're coming down Bryn Mawr, you have the new sidewalk that you just constructed, you then have, it meets an existing sidewalk which is in fair to poor condition in some places. Right after that, right before you get to the bridge, about 20 to 30 feet back from the bridge, it disappears completely and becomes a dirt path, shrubbery, that kind of stuff, and it's not really passable. I just want to make sure that when we're out there looking and constructing the sidewalk on the opposite side, that we come over to this side of the bridge so we have one continuous sidewalk the entire length that pedestrians can walk on.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we would want to make sure that we address all of it. We could, like I, I mentioned before, if we get a, you know, we can reach out to Mass DOT and get a permit to, to improve that, that, that little stretch of sidewalk on the other side, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be overly cumbersome just because it's, you know, there's curbing already there. But I can, I can definitely revisit it and, and make sure that that's the same area that we're, we're talking about and, and we'll get it addressed.
I, yeah, I do believe one of the individuals who had public comments has another question. Would you like to come back up?
I just have a question. When it comes to the privately owned property, can we know who owns that property of the, it's like right before the lake, that in-between that you were talking about, between the Mass DOT and the water? Is it state? Is it private land?
I believe, sorry, through the Chair, I believe that the, the majority of it, I believe, is the Water District. So it's not town property, it's the Water District property. It's something that, you know, we could, we could certainly discuss with the Water District, but I'd, I'd also want to make sure that, that entire section is, is, you know, we, we get, we get authority to make improvements on.
Okay, and then when it comes to, I know originally it was discussed that we couldn't go beyond from where the state ramp is towards the bridge because it's all private property. If the owners are okay with putting sidewalks on their land, can we still extend that?
There would still have to be a legal documentation that we, you know, that we would need to get from individual homeowners to, to.
Yes, yeah, I understand that, but if it were something that they would agree on, could we, is that possible to extend on?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we have, you know, permission from, from landowners.
Because I would definitely be interested in extending that. And I'm sure my neighbors would all be appreciative of that as well because they are just as concerned with their children being hit by cars racing down.
No, absolutely. I, I, I have the same concern and that's why I want to make sure that we, we construct something that, that's, that's going to protect the, the public.
Joanna, we have one more question from the audience. Mr. Largess, would you like to come up and ask your question?
Good evening, Board. Yeah, she said we'd have to get certain permits for, for this. I thought the town owns so many feet beyond the road for the purpose of sidewalks. Why do we need a permit if the town already owns that property? I'm a little confused. Isn't it like six, seven feet or something that from the, the road's edge in that we own for sidewalks?
Through the Chair, if I can answer that, so every road is different? Can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Joanna.
So every road is different and every right-of-way, you know, the, the typical right-of-way is 40 feet. There, there's, there's variations all over the place, but you, you would have sufficient room for a sidewalk depending on the side, the, the width of the road. And that's why you would want to have a survey done to see where that, the road extends because not every road was constructed right in the middle of that right-of-way. The problem with Bryn Mawr, especially the area where we're looking to, to make improvements of the sidewalk, even though we might own or we might, the right-of-way might extend by five or plus feet, we're looking at installing a five-foot sidewalk and there's probably a good, I'd want to say four-foot cut that, that would go along with that to, to make the grades work. So we would have to go on to the abutting property to, to grade that out just so that, you know, so to, to prevent, you know, soil from just covering the, the sidewalk once, once we're done with construction. So that's why it, it's a little bit more complicated at, especially at that bend because it is a, it's a deeper cut that would require us to grade further out. And as we grade further out, we're getting closer and closer to the water. So that's where the Conservatory Commission approval would, would take place.
In the, the area that Mr. Crane was talking about, I believe if you reach out to Mass DOT, when they did that bridge over, they ripped that area of the sidewalk up and never repaired it because you can see where it looks like they, they dug up the concrete. So that might save us some money and have Mass DOT do that. I don't know if you had noticed that.
I, I, I mean, like I said, I can, I can reach out to Mass DOT and have that conversation. That's just, hasn't, hasn't occurred yet.
Thank you, Joanna and Board.
Thank you, Joanna. Did we, so I think she's going to get back to us with some more information. Did we want to move on to eight C?
Before we do that, I just want to thank you for all the information and time you're putting into this. Thank you.
Okay, eight C is a report from Town Departments relative to complaints received concerning illegal fireworks during the Fourth of July days and surrounding. Good evening, gentlemen.
So through the Chair, after we received this memorandum from the town manager, we drafted and put some work into this and we drafted a two-page comprehensive report for the Board of Selectmen. And I would certainly entertain any questions that any member of the Board of Selectmen have with regards to noise complaints or fireworks complaints.
Do any Board members have questions?
Madam Chair, if I may? Thank you. I just want to thank the Chief for putting together that memo and responding to the complaints and concerns that I know we received from the residents of different areas. One of the things I want to highlight in the memo and I asked this, when I asked for this item to be placed on was, this is not just an enforcement issue. Your officers, you don't have the staff to staff 24/7 every street in the month of July, we all wish you did, but this is maybe something for the town manager. I think an important part of this is not to place the burden 100% on the police department. That's why I mentioned the potential for educational releases leading up to the Fourth of July, either via social media or some other outlet and whether we can think of ways to communicate with the public, the importance of, you know, not just the law, but also the effect that it can have on their neighbors, especially those with young children or those, you know, with pets or those that served and have PTSD. I mean, really just do more of an educational focus so that if and when the police do have to respond, we know that we've done everything we can to educate those residents before they lit those fireworks and now, you know, they, you know, they know why the police are there when, when the police do show up. So I just want to make sure that that sort of gets highlighted in the memo as well that this is not just a, you know, put everything on the police department. It's, it should be a more comprehensive look at ways that the town can communicate with the residents about this issue.
Through the Chair, I just want to assure the Board of Selectmen that all of my police officers and through the rank and file were very responsive to noise complaints, but I have to say that it brought something to light that we were able to change. We have 11 full-time dispatchers, are soon to have 11 full-time dispatchers, and we have a number of part-time dispatchers. And what brought to light was the way the call-takers codify the calls because one dispatcher may put it in as a general complaint where another one would put it into a disturbance of the peace. So we've directed our Communications Director, Marianne O'Connor, to come up with specifically a call for a fireworks complaint. I also want to let the BOS know that for every year of my 30 years here, people call in fireworks complaints on Packard Chog Street the same evening as the town-sponsored fireworks. So it happens, it happens from the area roadways, we explain it. I, my, this doesn't fall on deaf ears with me. I have a, I have a nervous Board of Colley at home that, that freaks out with thunderstorms and fireworks, so I get it, but the calls are being answered. The problem with this type of call, if you looked at this draft memo, if you looked at the statistics within Worcester District Court, who covers all these area towns, the amount of complaints that go in are minimal because we go to the calls, some of them call in fireworks, and the officers go down there and they spend some time in the neighborhood. If they're not going off, they clear the call. If they, if they see an active disturbance or a large party or gathering and they're getting fireworks going in, they're going to go in, they're going to win and address it. As I pointed out in the draft memo, it's not an arrestable offense. Again, we try to deal with it. Generally, people are very cooperative. You know, you're showing up on holidays and they go, we get it. And if the opportunity arises, we confiscate them. But nine out of 10 times when the police car pulls up front, you can only imagine what's going on and where the fireworks are going from there and any of the, any of the evidence, and generally that stops it right from there. But from the time before the Fourth of July until probably a few days afterwards, that generally seems to be our peak period, but we are very responsive to dealing with it.
Do any other Board members have questions? Thank you for your time and your report.
Thank you, Chief.
We're going to move to question eight A. A vote to rescind the posted 40 miles per hour speed limit regulation for Pinehurst Avenue and return the public way to 35, or 30 mile per hour statutory speed limit to the posted MAW 13-4, thickly settled 30-mile advisory speed sign on either end. So I understand there was a discussion with, with Attorney Higginson?
Yes, through the Chair, we had a conversation, Dory and I, and we invited Mr. Crane to have legal counsel understand his perspective. Mr. Crane made a compelling argument that we discussed at length and Town Council is now, understands, I guess, the, the relationship between the current bylaw and the statutory authority of the Board. And that being said, we had a discussion about the Board entertaining, making a motion to reduce the speed limit. Town Council was on board with that, provided that we clean up the bylaw at the upcoming town meeting. So we did put on a, a request to amend the bylaw, to remove a section of the bylaw that addresses a speed limit on, on a number of streets, and we fully intend on moving forward with that. So with that, I think there'll be a motion before the Board to consider the reduction of the speed limit on Pinehurst tonight.
Does any Board members have questions?
So, I do. So the authority lies with the Board, but we have to go to town meeting to amend?
Attorney Higgins saw a conflict between the bylaw and the Board's statutory authority, but recognizes that the bylaw usurped that authority. In recognition of that, he said the best way to handle that, and he recognizes statutory authority out of Chapter 90, Section 18, that allows the Board, this, this Board to set the speed limit on various streets throughout town. So that's clearly recognized, but we need to clean up the bylaw, which really should not have been approved by town meeting or the Attorney General because it took that power away, took that authority away from the Board of Selectmen.
Essentially, as, as discussed at the last time we discussed this, when I raised sort of the viewpoint that I had. sort of the, the viewpoint that I had, was that, uh, in discussions with Attorney Hennigan, we discussed Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18, which provides the board with the sole authority to establish and rescind posted speed limits, um, in coordination with Mass U.S. Department of Transportation. Previously, my understanding in those discussions was that the town bylaws referenced those special speed regulations, but did not incorporate them into the bylaws. At some point in time, I think it was about 2015?
2015?
Around, I think around 2015, the, the general bylaws were updated, and it specifically created Sections 1712, 1713, 1714, which incorporated those, um, speed regulations into the general bylaws. Essentially, town meeting was establishing a speed regulation, uh, something they did not have the authority to do. It was not caught at the time, um, and it was not caught by the attorney general either. However, uh, there's no statutory authority for town meeting to take that action. So what the attorney, um, had recommended was that the board has the authority to go ahead, uh, under our, uh, authority to take a vote to either establish or rescind the speed limit. He did recommend, for clarity purposes with the public, as well as town officials, that we do, uh, not just remove Pinehurst, but he recommended we remove all speed regulations from the bylaws, so that the board does not have the, uh, the, face this issue in the, in the future. But we have the authority to take this action tonight, to notify Mass DOT that we are taking the action and to move forward. We're just, he just recommended the town clean up the bylaws as well.
Through the chair, what, what if town meeting decides they don't want to clean them up? Does that create a, a different legal issue for us?
I don't believe so. Still, under Chapter 90, Section 18, you would still have the authority to amend, uh, those.
So us voting on this is all within our rights, and irrespective of what town meeting chooses to do, we're still compliant. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. So I know Pinehurst wasn't the only street that had that. I'm sorry, is, can you guys keep it down? Who is that? Gotcha. What happens to the other streets that are also listed in those bylaws?
Those would be amended out as well.
Okay.
Removed.
Okay.
Be removed from the bylaws, but we're not taking action on changing.
On those streets. Okay. Okay. So is there a motion to rescind the 40 mile per hour speed limit?
So, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, under our authority of Chapter 90, Section 18, to re, uh, vote to rescind the posted 40 mile per hour special speed regulation for Pinehurst Avenue and return the public way to the 30 mile per hour statutory speed limit under Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17, and also to request that DPW post the MAW 13 slash 4, thickly settled 30 mile per hour advisory speed sign on either end of Pinehurst Avenue to notify the motorists of the new speed limit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, so we will be going back to public hearings. We have a motor vehicle repair license for all Clear Diagnostics and Calibration on Washington Street. Do we have a motion to open the hearing? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to open the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, um, yeah, please come up. Can you tell us, um, your name and the, um, what you're looking to do?
Good evening, my name is Jared Lyles. I'm representing All Clear Diagnostics and Calibrations. We're here applying for our business license to perform, uh, electronic repairs on vehicles. We don't do any bodywork, paintwork, anything like that. This is strictly resetting and recalibrating modules, sensors, cameras, things like that, post-repair. And we will be functioning out of the garage at 113 Washington Street.
Do board members have any questions? Uh, is there a motion to close the hearing?
As a public hearing, I believe you have to ask the public if they.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any, does the public have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Do we have a motion to approve or deny the license?
I'll make a motion that we approve the license. Sorry, where do we start reading this? Provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon it.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
Thank you.
All right, you're up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. There are no communications on select board general items. We have the Century Sportsman Club Outdoor Entertainment License. Did you want to come up? Great. Can you just state your name, please?
Uh, my name is Frank Height. I'm the treasurer of the Century Sportsman's Club.
Great, could you tell us a little bit about the hayride?
Sure. Uh, so this will be our 24th year. Basically, the same event as, as in the past. We have 41 acres on Rochdale Street. We have a haunted hayride, which involves guests coming down, being put on a haywagon, taken through our property, and hopefully scared. They return back where they started, um, and then after that, there's a haunted maze that they go through, and, uh, there are some food vendors, um, and some other, uh, potential vendors, like a face painter or something like that, but it's a, it's a longtime Halloween event in, uh, in the town, and we're asking for our entertainment license to be issued again this year.
Great, do board members have any questions? Um, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state, town, and its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you. So next we have the interviews for the Finance Committee. We have three applicants. Stephen Consilio, um, George Graham, and Mark Sclamo. Ed, do you want? Do we need to keep, um, everybody separate?
That's up to the board. I mean, um, I don't know if you want to do it on a, on a call all three up and do, and do it on a rotating basis, so each has an opportunity to answer questions in a different format, or whether you want to call them up individually. We can hold the other candidates in the planning board room, if, if that's the wish of the, of the board.
Do board members have any, um, recommendations? Thoughts? Would we like to do them separately?
I know that's how we did the housing authority.
Okay.
Consistency, but I, it doesn't matter in either way.
We'll do it individually.
Yeah, let's do it individually. Okay.
So we'll go in alphabetical order, correct? And so Stephen, you'll, you will lead off, and if the other two, uh, candidates can come into another room here?
Hi, Stephen. So the board policy has three specific questions, three questions that they ask, and then each board member can ask two additional questions, and they will be the same two additional questions to each applicant. So, um, I'm gonna start with the first of the three questions. Um, what is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
Well, I'm always curious about lots of things and everything. So I've done the, um, you know, the Fire Academy, the Police Academy, the Citizens' Leadership Academy. I've done the Citizen Legislature at the State House. So I'm always curious about how things work, and certainly following the money trail and how things get paid for, as we heard, about, uh, you know, there's always more to it than meets the eye, so.
Sure, and so the second question is, do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Generically, I understand numbers. I've been self-employed most of my life, and I understand economics and taxes and all that kind of thing.
Um, my final question is, do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at the scheduled meetings and/or any additional meetings if needed?
My understanding is, is they're in their aft, they're in the afternoon or evening, and there's a lot of them certain times of the year, but those won't be a problem.
Great, thank you so much. Do board members have any additional questions?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask, I, I know that, uh, the Finance Committee Vice Chair, Mr. Kennedy, is here. Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to provide the opportunity, if he has a question to ask of the candidates as well. You don't have to, I just wanted to make that offer.
Thank you. Is there any other additional questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Graham, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you. So we have three questions. The first is, what is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
Uh, yep, so I'm proud to live in Auburn. I grew up in Charlton, um, and Auburn is just, uh, to me, a much better place to live. I enjoy it a lot more. I have two kids. They're gonna grow up here. I plan on being here for a long time. I think it's a good town, it's well-run, and I just want to help try and keep it that way.
Great, thank you. Um, the second question is, do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Uh, yep, so I have my MBA at UMass Amherst, Eisenberg School of Business. I help, I basically manage, uh, my family business in Lester. It's about 25 employees, $10 million in sales, um, and that has given me a lot of experience, I think would be relative.
Great, and the final question is, do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at the scheduled meetings and/or any additional meetings as needed?
I'm in the zoning bylaw review committee, but they seem to be pretty flexible with the timing, um, like we just picked the next meeting right now, so I don't think there's anything that would take priority over this.
Do any board members have questions? Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sclamo, thank you so much for being here. We have three questions. Um, the first one is, what is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
You know, I seen on, um, you know, the town TV that they were looking for people in, uh, you know, to help serve on committees and boards and stuff, and I originally was interested in the, uh, the Public Safety Building, and I got an email about there's some openings on the Finance Committee, and, you know, I've been living in town for over 30 years, and, you know, if I can help out on any of the boards or committees, I'd definitely be interested.
Great, thank you. Um, do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Uh, no, no finance experience.
Okay. Um, and finally, do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at scheduled meetings and/or additional meetings as needed? Okay, um, do board members have any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Um, I believe we have, you can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have two appointments, correct?
Madam Chair, that is correct. Just to let the board know, we do have a vacancy in Precinct 4 that is not filled by any of the Finance Committee members, which would leave a at-large seat for any of the two candidates, so. So yes, there would be two appointments.
Okay. Do we have, does the board have any nominations?
I will make a motion to nominate, uh, Mr. Sclamo for the Precinct 4 seat.
Are there any other nominations, additional nominations?
I'll make a motion to nominate Steve Consilio for the seat.
Do we want to take them one at a time? So we have one that is expiring June 30th, 2024, and a second one that is expiring June 30th, 2025.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was gonna ask, which, uh, the Precinct 4 seat, which is that? Or does it not matter?
I would act on the Precinct 4 as a standalone, because the other vacancy can be filled by anyone in any other precinct.
Yeah, I just mean in terms of the, the.
Expire term.
Expire down the 20, in 2024 or 2025. Does it, does it matter, the precinct one?
It doesn't matter, because there was no one serving in that, that, um, seat anyways, in Precinct 4.
So I'll amend that motion for Mr. Sclamo for the, um, 63024 seat.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Do you, um, all those in favor?
Do we want other nominations?
Oh, do you want, sorry.
There are no other.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna second Ann's nomination of Steve Consilio, uh, for the other seat.
For the, um.
For the, for the 6302025 expiration.
Do we have any other nominations?
Um, I nominate, um, Mr. Graham for the, um, term that expires on 63024.
So we are gonna take the, um.
Can I just ask a clarification? Do we have to appoint somebody from Precinct 4? Because we now have, Mr. Graham is from Precinct 3.
Always, um, I don't think it's required, but I think it, it's always been preferred that you have a representative from each precinct. Certainly, that discretion is, is left up to the board.
It's not mandated, it's not required.
Are there any other nominations for the 6302025? So let's start there. Um, for the nomination, all those in favor, um, of the Mr. Consig, Consilio nomination for the 6302025 seat?
Yes.
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 The chair is a yes as well. So let's go move forward with the 6302024. All those in favor of Mr. Sclamo's nomination?
Yes.
Okay, and all those in favor of Mr. Graham's nomination?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, the chair is a yes as well. So congratulations, Mr. Graham and Mr. Consilio. Thank you so much for appearing, Mr. Sclamo. We appreciate, um, um, your enthusiasm to serve on any board. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move along to the citizens petition for street acceptance for Whitman Bailey Drive, the street layout hearing.
Just wanted to congratulate.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Alright, we're gonna take a few minutes break. We will be back shortly. Oh, okay. Alright, I guess we're good. Alright. So in our packets, we have a citizens' petition for a street acceptance for Whitman Bailey Drive. The street layout. I'm gonna turn that over to you, Ed.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm gonna ask Dr. Adam Menard to join this conversation. There has been a citizens' petition filed with over 100 required signatures for a fall town meeting to accept Whitman Bailey Drive as a public way. And we invited the petitioners to attend tonight. We are currently having conversations with Town Council on the process, because we don't have a legal description of the street and engineering plan. And I, and so, there is a, this is going before the Planning Board tomorrow night.
Correct.
And the Planning Board is, is probably gonna raise a number of issues relative to the requirements and what they consider this for, for public acceptance. So, I know time is of the essence, because there's this scheduled go-to-town meeting. So I would ask if there's anyone here that is representing Whitman Bailey Drive, maybe giving them an opportunity to speak on the matter?
Please, come up. You can either sit or to the podium and just let us know your name and your address.
My name is John Headley, and I'm on the Board of Trustees for Whitman Bailey Drive condo association.
Great, thank you so much. Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair, I just, through you, have you been provided with a copy of the letter from Dr. Menard in terms of that raises several issues or concerns?
I have not received anything since we made the petition.
Is it potentially, is it possible that we can provide a copy of the letter and the concerns? Only because I think that, you know, the Planning Board is probably gonna have similar questions that I would have with, you know, with the, the manner in which the, the currently private road does not meet the standards that we would normally build a public road to. And I would, you know, I don't wanna pepper you with these questions tonight, obviously, because you haven't seen this and you haven't been able to prepare. But I, you know, I can't speak for town meeting, I can't speak for, for my former colleagues on the Planning Board, but I would have concerns supporting the application based on these.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, if I may. I believe the contents of that letter was, may not have been provided to this trustee, but wasn't it provided to the individual who is taking the lead on this?
No, they have not. We saved the letter at this, this point. I'll make sure they get a copy.
Screw the chair. If this goes to town meeting, which it's gonna go to town meeting, correct, is on, and they accept it, it's the town's responsibility to fix the deficiencies, correct?
There are a number of legal issues, quite honestly. I don't know how they would be resolved. This is considered one parcel in our individual lots, and how that impacts the ownership of various things is very complicated. So I think Adam spelled that out in his letter. We'd be happy to give the trustees a copy of that in preparation for what we believe will be asked of them tomorrow night, the Planning Board.
So will the petitioner be given an opportunity to either withdraw or hold until items can be resolved?
I don't know if it can be withdrawn. I know we can postpone indefinitely by a motion on the floor, the night of town meeting. But I don't know how we can have a layout hearing when we typically advertise the meats and bounties, the legal requirements of the street. We don't have that.
That's correct.
And I do think the Planning Board will have their say, so I won't ask direct questions on that. It's more procedural. Thank you.
So I guess my question, either for the chair or for town administration, this is advertised as a street layout hearing, but we don't have the information needed for that hearing. How, how do we handle that? Do we?
That's a good question. We had a conversation with Town Council last week. Legally, because it's presented as a citizens' petition, although typically a layout hearing is required, Town Council said it would still go to town meeting. Even though there's no layout hearing, there's nothing to lay out. We don't have the engineering requirements to do so. He still seems to think it can go forward. I saw there is a reason not to continue this, because it is required, but that's not the information that we received from Town Council. Adam, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Do any board members have any additional questions? So I guess, without any additional questions, we will wait and hear from the recommendations on the Planning Board? Certainly.
It's hard for us to prepare to address any concerns if we're not given the information.
You can have, you can have my copy?
If I may, sir, this wasn't even a, this wasn't even on the radar screen until a citizens' petition was received by the town. That triggers a, a number of reviews that would allow us to consider this for public acceptance.
Okay, so all we know is, as a board that's new for the association, looking at different documents that were provided to us from the builder, because I'm pretty sure Justin Stelmach appeared in front of you guys when he proposed this development in the first place. And he asked it to be a private road. And I don't know if it was originally designed to be a public road, but in order to make it a private road, there were waivers granted. And I don't know if they're granted by the planning people or not. So our bottom line was, if everything was okay and the waivers were granted for exceptions to any normal standards, why couldn't we just fix those waivers? And bring us back to square one? And I don't know what the terms would be after that, to make it a public road. If the only thing that stopped it from being a public road in the first place was the granting of three or four waivers. If we fixed those three or four waivers, wouldn't we be okay to have it a public road? Because anything related to zoning and lots and things like that were granted. And if they were granted in the first place, is there an exception to, okay, here's what we, you can't do it because of certain zoning requirements, then could we ask for a waiver, just like Justin asked for a waiver in the first place?
So, and again, staff can correct me if I'm wrong. I think a good, a good starting point for you would be this letter, because it essentially bullet points everything that, with the road, that does not meet the standard design for a publicly maintained roadway.
So I'll bring this back to the Board of Trustees, and we'll start looking at these. And, and as far as tomorrow night, what, do we need to do anything for tomorrow night?
They'll have your public hearing, they'll open the, the public hearing. They'll have, they'll let her also, they'll have questions as to why you're looking to change a private road to a public.
I guess I'd like to ask that question as well. Why, why are you interested in changing it from a private way to a public roadway?
I imagine for the most part that it's pretty similar to why Justin asked it to be a private road in the first place, to save hidden costs. And so we're a small association. If tomorrow the sewer line should break, that could be a couple hundred thousand dollar cost for an association that's brand new and doesn't have the funds to do that. But as tax-paying citizens, you know, we contribute a lot to the town. So we're just looking for our fair share of town resources in case we need it.
Is there any additional questions? Thank you so much for your time. I think this will be on the town meeting warrant. And I recommend that if town, if you, if town meeting members have questions, that you attend that as well.
Can I just ask, is this, since we're lacking the information that would normally present it for a street layout hearing, does this potentially come back to us once we have that information? Or is this?
To the chair, the Planning Board will be making a recommendation to town meeting, which does come to the selectmen, whether they make a recommendation at tomorrow night's meeting or they postpone their, continue the hearing until the following September 26th meeting. You will be getting something from the Planning Board with their recommendations, so it will be on your agenda at some point.
Thank you.
Unless the board would like to consider setting a date for a layout hearing, provided that all the applicable documents are provided in a timely fashion, that would allow you to do, to do so.
So when is town meeting?
October 26th. 24th.
24th, and when is our meeting, our, our regular meeting before that date?
It's the second week in October, but that's the Columbus Day week, so.
You'll have a meeting on the 25th of September.
It would be the 10th.
That would be your next meeting.
I'm just thinking, trying to be respectful and give them enough time to, because there's, there's a lot in there when you see it. But also give us enough time to review it and weigh in for town meeting.
What's the first meeting in October?
October 2nd, the 10th.
Alright, so if they meet on the 25th, how many days does it have to be advertised before? 10? So I think you could meet the timeline, if in fact, everything is in order on the 25th. You schedule a layout hearing for your board meeting on October 10th? It'd be tight, but I think it's doable.
So we could put this on an October 10th meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
And that, have to vote on the 25th to schedule it for the 10th. We'd have to advertise 10 days prior, at least 10 days prior to.
And town meeting is the,
Town meeting is the 24th.
24th, okay. So that gives you about four weeks to pull together the information.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have a pro, a request for a proclamation by Deborah Nurse for Constitution Week. Oh, great, Ms. Nurse. Hi, yes, absolutely.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Deborah Nurse, and I am the Constitution Week Chairman of the Colonel Timothy Bigelow Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. Our chapter is named for Colonel Timothy Bigelow, who was born on Packagog Hill in what is now known as Auburn in 1739. In 1773, he was a member of the Committee of Correspondence. He was chosen as the commander of the Minutemen of Worcester. He marched at the Battle of Lexington and conquered and volunteered for the expedition to Quebec. He was captured by the British and was a prisoner of war for eight months. Promptly re-entering service, he served in major battles and was made a full colonel. After eight years in the army, he returned to Worcester ill and had difficulty resuming his business. He was remanded to debtor's prison, where he died in 1790 at the age of 51. His monument still stands, and it is located on the Worcester Common. Tonight, I would like to recognize the celebration of Constitution Week, an annual celebration signed into law by President Dwight Eisenhower in 1956. This year marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. I would like to thank you for recognizing Constitution Week in Auburn. I will also note that the Auburn Public Library is also setting up a display within the library and having signage outside to commemorate this important week. Thank you for your support of this important event.
Thank you, thank you. So we have before us the proclamation.
If you could sign this, so we can,
Yes, do you want, do you want me to read the proclamation? So the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And it is fitting improper, whereas it is fitting improper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial and memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 7th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, do by here, do hereby proclaim the week of September 26th, September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving along, we do not have any gift acceptances. Do we have any update on the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission delegate request? Did everybody get the, is this an email?
So Madam Chair, I know that the Town Planner through Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has reached out. They're looking for a delegate to be served by a board member. Board members have served in the past, so we're asking if anyone would be willing to serve in that capacity.
Previously served for the, representing the Planning Board. I'm interested if no other member is. However, I know Steve has previously served as well.
So I don't know when my term expires, but I thought I was still a delegate?
I don't, I don't have that information available.
So I, again, I don't know what the term is, but I know I did it originally at that last year, truly.
I know there's, there's three representatives. I believe there is a Planning Board nominee. When I became, when I was elected to this position, I resigned that. And I know that they have filled that position. I know that there's typically a board position appointed by the board. And then I know that there's typically one appointed by the town manager, that Rachel Presley used to serve.
So that would indicate to me that the term is expired, Mr. Chambers. So if you want me to serve again, provided that the term is expired, would you like it?
No, I will gladly defer to you.
I will take it.
Great, you want me to?
Wonderful. Next, we have to vote on the appointment of election workers. And there is a list of election workers in the packet. Does anybody have any questions? I know Ginger's here, if anybody has any questions. Okay, so we would need a motion?
Okay, I make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that the board votes to appoint the individual for the list provided by the interim town clerk for the 2023 to 2024 elections.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair is a yes. We are all set. And now we are moving on to town manager items.
Madam Chair, item number one, I'd like to call up Helen Poirier. She's here. They are applying for a grant not through the Town of Auburn that would provide for some signage at our local cemetery, cemeteries, to commemorate the anniversary of the Revolutionary War. But I'll have Ms. Poirier get into some of the specifics as to, as to what the grant will provide for. Certainly because this marker is going to be placed on town property, I wanted the board to have that information. And I think she can identify the locations where that signage would be placed.
And you are very lucky, you get a double dose of the daughters tonight. My name is Helen Poirier. I reside at 35 Appleton Road. I come to you tonight as the Regent for the General Ebenezer Leonard Daughters of the American Revolution Chapter, which is based out of Oxford. The National Society for the Daughters of the American Revolution and the William G. Palmeroy Foundation have partnered up to make available 250 of those markers to commemorate the upcoming 250th anniversary of the Revolutionary War. The markers are to be used for marking for people, places, or events that were important to the different towns and places during the Revolutionary War. Auburn is very lucky to have two such places that we could put these markers. One of them is the West Auburn Baptist Burial Ground, which is the one next to Wendy's, that has three Revolutionary War patriots in it. And the other is the Central Burial Ground, which is next to the Congregational Church and has 17 red patriots buried there. All is required from the town is a written, in this case, I would need two written letters that would state, a written statement authorizing installation of the marker from the property owner or custodian of the land where the marker is to be placed. The letter must be dated within the past year. The signed dated letter should include a statement explaining what, by what right the writer has the authority to grant this permission. This grant is not going to cost the town anything except those two letters. The General Ebenezer Leonard Chapter, along with the Auburn Historical Society, this Sari Bidix, who is the president of the Historical Society and Museum, is here with me tonight also. We are collaborating to make sure that everything that goes on these signs has been verified and documented, which is required. The, not only does the Palmeroy Foundation verify it, but the Historian General of the Daughters of the American Revolution do it also. This is about a year's process. First six months is the verification, and then it takes about six months to have it marked. The mission of the Daughters of the American Revolution is education, historic preservation, and patriotism. So this is a wonderful way to educate the public about the people who answered the call for the country to be a patriot and commemorate it with a historic marker that will be seen and carried on. And it's a good start to the 250th anniversary of the Revolutionary War. This program was started last year, and because it takes so long, not a lot of them have been out there yet. So I wanted my town to get on board and have these two markers and start the Revolutionary War anniversary off. And all I need is two letters.
Do any more members have questions? Certainly.
Helen, once these signs are delivered, who's responsible for the installation?
I would like to work with the DPW people and have them maybe work to do the whole and put in some cement. And we would definitely work with whoever would like replacement of them. It is required that they be, according to the grant, in a very visible place. Obviously, if the foundation is putting all this money into markers, they want them to be seen.
Is there a specific location of the two cemeteries that has been identified for installation, or there's some flexibility there?
There is flexibility.
Okay.
By all means, it's, I hadn't thought that far. I don't like to put the cart before the horse. I want to get the money in the plaques first, and then whatever people would like to work with, but it is required they should be visible. And we should be proud of the people. We had, the Auburn Historical Society has identified quite a few patriots from this town, and one of them happens to be a Native American, Benjamin Weiser, which is a rarity to be able to have that documentation. And I'll be looking into special recognition for him as a Native American and a town resident.
Thank you. Do we need a vote to produce this letter?
I just want to ask, Sari, as a member of the Historic Society, are you embracing this installation?
Not only as a member of this, and a Historical Society, but I'm a sole remaining cemetery resident. And I think it'd be a wonderful thing to have for our cemeteries.
Madam Chair, if there are no objections, we will continue to pursue the grant funding that will allow for the installation of the signs.
Do board members have any objections? Nope, that sounds great.
I have a question. To whom do I seek this letter from? And how long do I give you to get me the letters? Because I'd like to get it in as soon as possible, being that it's such a long time.
So we can talk about the elements of the letter. The town manager is responsible for the care and custody of all town property. So you, we could work together to get you those letters.
When can we meet?
Sometime this week, if you can call my office, we can.
I will, I will. But I would like it, and I'll have you know, Auburn is getting it before my chapter in Oxford.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the ARPA impact shifts.
Madam Chair, I know that Fire Chief is participating remotely. I believe when the board voted to support continuing the impact shifts until town meeting, we didn't know the value of that continuing. So the deputy chief, in consultation with the chief, has provided us a number that will continue to provide for an additional person on the shift. There has a total cost of $89,760. So like all ARPA funds, there always has been a motion to approve that amount that will allow us to isolate that and commit it towards the purpose that it's voted for.
Do we have a motion?
I thought it was already voted upon at the last meeting.
I think there was, there was consensus or a vote to support. We said we would bring back a number.
Then I will make a motion to allocate $89,760 of the ARPA money to cover the impact shifts through October 31st, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Of the chair is a yes as well. And next, we're moving on to the HVAC study from semen engineering.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment on the Library Board of Trustees.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
So I just want to inform the board, at the time I received a resignation letter from a trustee member who sent a letter to the town clerk, we advertised immediately. So we have not received any applications for the vacancy. So we just wanted to put it out there and publicly that we are still seeking an applicant for that vacant position.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the semen. Do board members have any questions? All right, now we're going to move on to the semen engineering.
So I just want to get this to the board for informational purposes. We had, as you can see, we had several different studies done on various municipal buildings. Semen has done an assessment on our HVAC systems, and it has made some recommendations based upon the current infrastructure that is in place and what would be most efficient for those buildings. In some cases, there are multiple options. I have not had an opportunity to discuss this with, A, the school department, Joe Fahey. I have not had an opportunity to discuss with Caleb Moody, our building commissioner. What I can tell you is these recommendations do not come with a cost. We would have to bid these out separately. We would have to bid them out by option. We'd have to probably bid them out by separate location, because I don't know what the cost is going to be for each one of these buildings. Right now, we have about one, I want to say about 1.5 million still available in ARPA funds. I would also have to consult with the school department and also review our own capital improvement plan to see if there are funds already earmarked for some of this work, and what impact that's going to have on the total bottom cost. So we're not prepared to put an amount out there. We would have to actually put this out to bid, and we're probably doing a phased approach based upon priority to see what that level of commitment is going to be.
Do board members have any questions?
Are you looking to prioritize solely on the recommendations or on the fusil building?
I don't believe the recommendation by semen prioritizes a bike public building. That's an internal discussion we're going to have to have based upon a number of criteria. One, energy costs being expended to support those buildings now, and does it make sense to bid out those high-end energy users in an effort to save the town money in the long run? So those are the kind of conversations we're going to have in the coming weeks.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, moving along to 6E, an update on the homeless migrants.
Madam Chair, I apologize. Can we go back to 6C for one second?
Certainly, yeah.
In terms of, since we have done the normal advertising to try to get a candidate for the Library Board trustees and no one has stepped forward, is it possible potentially to advertise in the library itself, a flyer in the library itself? Because the users of the library may be probably the best pool we have of potential candidates, then they might not see the social media post or might not see the, you know, the website.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving along to 6E.
So Madam Chair, when we put this agenda together, I didn't know whether there was going to be some additional information I could share with the board. I can say that the joint statement that the superintendent and I jointly put together and advertised on our website on August 29th has not changed in terms of the data that we provided to our residents. We currently have 29 families residing in town, and we continue to work with the state and other governmental agencies and private and nonprofit agencies. Auburn Youth and Family Services has been very helpful in assisting these families. We continue to work with the state to do health and wellness checks on these families that would allow them to get integrated into our Auburn Public School system. And with that, that maybe requires some vaccinations and some other medical intervention. I can tell you, the state is providing two meals for these families on a daily basis. They are occupying one of our hotels here in town. That hotel does also provide a continental breakfast to these families. So they're getting three meals a day. But I could tell you, there's been outreach as it relates to nonprofits and agencies that are willing to assist these families by providing food, by providing clothing, by providing gift cards. And we welcome any donations that may be made to the Auburn Youth and Family Services organization. That will continue to help these families. So if these numbers do change, we will update the board as soon as we get that information. But like I said, the content of that press release is still accurate, and nothing has changed since then.
Do board members have any questions? Certainly.
Do we have a, have we been assigned a representative from the state or liaison? Is there someone working with these families?
Great question. So when these families were brought in, there was not a state liaison. The National Guard, 250 National Guardmen have been deployed in order to assist in that endeavor, and they should be on the ground very shortly. There was a one-week training period before they were sent to these communities that didn't have a liaison. So we're expecting that very shortly.
My other question is, have the schools received any information from DESI regarding perhaps some funding to help educate these students?
So there was a recent Zoom conference with the governor's office last week. We've been told that the state is going to provide roughly $104 per day for each student that is integrated into the school system. But yes, there has been some guidance from DESI on the educational piece of that that the superintendent has been following since day one.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll move along to item 8D. That is the Select Board vote to submit to town meeting based on the advice of Town Council, a warrant article to amend general bylaws by removing section 17 dot 12, and 17 dot 13, and 17 dot 14.
Madam Chair, it appears that town staff had already taken this step before the warrant closed, so I'm happy to withdraw this item.
Great. And then we have a request for an update on the Perry Place project.
So as a result of this member item, I reached out to the developer, and I had a conversation with him on Thursday, late in the afternoon, early evening. It was at that point, the developer informed me that they're no longer pursuing a 40B friendly project. They are going directly to the state. I asked the developer if they would be willing to formally send something to the town, notifying us that they are no longer interested in the 40B. To date, I have not received anything, but what I can tell you is that that was verbally conveyed to me on Thursday. So with that, I fully expect that they will go directly to the state. All the commitments that were associated with that development agreement no longer will be, will no longer exist. I can tell you that agreement was never executed to begin with, despite the fact that we sent it out, and I believe, on July 19th, and have not received any correspondence or anything to date relative to that agreement. So I don't know what to say other than they're going to pursue this project by going directly to the state. Certainly, it's going to be vetted by our boards and committees once it comes back. So I think some of the same issues that were addressed initially in the development agreement are going to be addressed through our boards and committees, so.
Do board members have any questions?
Through the chair, did the developer give a reason for withdrawing or not accepting the agreement?
I was hoping to get to that level of specificity through the withdrawal letter. That information was not shared with me. I can speculate why I think they may have withdrawn, but I don't want to be presumptuous. I, you know, I was hoping to get that level of detail through the letter, but.
Thank you.
So at what stage do we get notified from the state of their application? Do we get notified of their application at all? Or once it's been approved, then?
No, I think there's a notification period. No, I think there's a notification period once it's received by the state. And there's a, like a 60-day period for comment or whatever else. I don't know the actual... I believe it's 60 days. That it's open for public comment and then the decision is made and then there's a formal notification process.
So, then as a town, do we have a process in which all the boards get together and make their recommendations and one cohesive statement? Or what they're looking for? Or what they'd like to see as part of that? Like, or I don't know what the process is in a non-friendly. I know in a friendly, we have a lot more oversight. But how do we get our concerns addressed in a cohesive manner?
So, this would be vetted, I believe, by the ZBA. In terms of scheduling that before the ZBA, I don't know if that's done directly by the developer or through the state. But certainly, there is a process relative to that.
So, Mr. Chambers.
Chair, typically, the process is that they will file their notification to the state and ask for determination by the state that the location is suitable and that their project as defined is suitable. At that point, they will notify the Director Butters as well as the town. I believe it's 60 days, could be wrong. But there is an opportunity for the town and any individual committee, board, or resident to file comment to the state contesting the suitability of the location or raise issues with the location, the project as it's defined, et cetera. And then the state makes a determination on whether it is a suitable location in their determination and whether they will support it. At that point, if they determine it's not suitable, it dies. If they determine it's suitable, it moves it to the ZBA process. At that point, our ZBA will go through their normal zoning process where they review the project. However, 40B does allow the developer to sidestep many of the zoning regulations, provided they are willing to allocate a certain amount of units that will be deemed affordable at the, I think, the 80% AMI, which is not really affordable, but it meets the statute. And at that time, the ZBA would go through their normal process. I would just urge, when we get that notification, that this board considers drafting a letter challenging the suitability of this site as it's proposed. I think that we negotiated in good faith with that developer, not just this board, but the previous board. I think the concerns that we raised in the Lip Agreement were safety-based, safety-related, as well as the impact on the neighbors that I think the state should consider. And then, if the state makes a determination that it should move forward, I would recommend that the town administration do everything they can to ensure that the project that eventually comes out of that zoning process addresses all the concerns that we had addressed previously in the Lip Agreement.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so, we have some minutes from the August 14 meeting. Are there any corrections? Okay, I will accept them as read. So, we would just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair is a yes.